Good evening. I'd like to call Monroe Planning Commission regular meeting to order. This is Monday, January 9th. The time is 7:00 PM. Hannah, would you take role, please?
I'd love to. Commissioners present and establishing a quorum, Commissioners Bull, Blair, Walker, Nugent, Lockhart, Lewis, and Dawkins.
Thank you very much. Good to see you, Commissioners. This time we have set aside public time for public comments, typically three minutes. Subject matter can be anything that is not in our current list of business. And Hannah, do you see anybody in the waiting room?
We have one person in the waiting room. If you'd like to submit public comment, please raise your hand and we can give you the speaking powers.
Move on to the next item. This is a review and approval of minutes from our Monday, December 12th. Planning Commission meeting. Does everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Any edits at all, Commissioners? Stask that someone move approval of minutes from December 12th?
I move that we approve the minutes from the December 12th, 2022 meeting.
Thanks, Melanie.
My second.
Thanks, Brandy. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Okay, minutes approved. Next item is an item in the new business area. We have a presentation from City Admin for Imagine Monroe. Mayor Thomas.
Thank you, Chair. Just waiting for a moment. Are we able to increase the size just a little bit of the screen? All right, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I truly appreciate the opportunity to address you here this evening. One of the things that I think that each one of you is aware of is that when the comprehensive plan was approved a number of years ago, the the approach to the comprehensive plan was to make it a more pragmatic document. In so doing, approximately nine years ago, the comprehensive plan lacked some sort of more vision oriented statements that are common in comprehensive plans. Approximately four or five years ago, the Economic Development Advisory Committee or Board, when they were trying to determine what sort of projects or programs should be funded first, the Economic Development Advisory Board was stumped because there was not an overriding vision for our community. There was not this way for them to go through this nuance of they're both important. So how do I determine which one's more important to recommend to council for funding? Those comments were forwarded to me. I felt that they were bringing up valid points. We shared that information with the council in roughly 2018. The council concurred that it would be helpful to have an overarching vision statement for our city. They approved in 2020, I think, a contract for us to begin work to develop a vision for our community. The pandemic happened in early 2020, which sort of delayed the project for a period of time. Mid 2020, when we realized that the pandemic was lasting longer than we anticipated and that going back to having in-person meetings was something that was limiting, we decided to proceed, we being me and the council and the staff. After going through a number of online surveys, a lot of in-person contacts and outreach events, talking with a board of approximately 20 Imagine Monroe, I'm sorry, Vision Board members that became Imagine Monroe, we ended up with what is called today Imagine Monroe. And so this is a vision statement that stands above everything that we do here. It reflects the comments that we received from the community. And it it reflects not only how we are supposed to be looking at prioritizing projects and identifying projects and programs, but it also how we develop policies and how we develop budgets. The Imagine Monroe is also, because it is above the comprehensive plan, intended to help inform the development of the comprehensive plan, which all of you are about ready to embark on again, for me, nine years later, because you do this every eight to nine years or so. So what I'm going to do this evening is I'm going to go ahead and read Imagine Monroe. I think I'm supposed to talk a little bit about the branding project. And and then I'll be available, Chair, if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. Somebody go ahead and read this for everybody. And I do thank staff for increasing the size of print. I am dealing with new glasses that are progressive. So in focus, no. Out of focus, in focus, and it gets confusing. I'm afraid I'm going to run into something. First, we didn't call this a vision statement. So I think that's important to know. And we didn't call it a vision statement because you as planning commissioners probably realize or will soon, if you haven't dealt with this, that when we talk about vision in local government, a lot of times vision falls to the comprehensive plan. And it's not all the time that you have an overarching vision for a community. So rather than calling this just a vision statement, I've got to refer to it as something with people, I will say aspirational vision statement. What we wanted to do is we wanted to define who we are today and who we aspire to be tomorrow. Because again, this is supposed to be not only who we're trying to be today, but who we want to be tomorrow as well. All right, to shorten things, then we just call it Imagine Monroe. I'll read it. Imagine Monroe, a lively center surrounded by nature, a place of beauty and goodwill. Our parks, waterways, and environment are healthy and accessible for everyone to enjoy. Our historic downtown and business districts are thriving and full of locally owned businesses and locally sourced products. We can find everything we need with regional connections and with a variety of choices for work, housing, dining, shopping, arts, and activities. Friendly and responsive, we strengthen connections through gathering spaces, events, services, and community centered infrastructure, creating a safe place for all. In Monroe, everyone feels at home. And everyone feels they belong. So as you're reading that, I hope that you, as a planning commission, can see how a lot of what you do as a planning commission is in there. You can see in there that the reflection to the environment, the reflection of a center surrounded by nature. It's not every city in this state, or in any state for that matter, that is situated like ours. Some people call our cities, a city like Monroe, a standalone city. We don't have another city adjacent to us. You go into the Seattle area and there are times where, you know, am I in Seattle or am I in Shoreline? You know, am I in Woodinville or I'm in Bothell? You know, here we are a city. And so we are a city surrounded by nature. It was important for people to know that we were a place of beauty and goodwill. And and what that means is that it's not a sense, not just a sense of physical beauty, which you see, you know, with the mountains and the fact that you can walk around in an urban area and see cows. But but we're supposed to be a place of beauty also inside, intrinsically, who we are. And goodwill, and that's reflected again back to beauty, making certain that we are caring for one another. And this was a big part of what we heard is that we are a community that at least strives to care for one another, to be supportive of one another. And then you can see there the reflection to the park center that my wife and I, one of the reasons why we moved to Monroe back in 2000, was that the land here spoke to us, the way that the development had occurred here, and Monroe spoke to us. From Lake Tye to the Frylands up to where we live in the foothills, there were trails, you know, these multi-purpose pathways that allowed you to go from park, you know, pocket park to pocket park or park to park connecting residential development. You know, these days we might call that multimodal transportation, you know, for us, we just called it, you know, ways to get around the city. And, you know, we have parks and we have, we include sidewalks when construction is occurring. We try to make certain that things are lit so that you go out and use them at night, you know, things like that. And so the waterways, of course, we have two rivers here, Woods Creek and also the Skycomish River. And then we want to make certain that our parks and everything that we have here is accessible for everyone to enjoy. You can see a lot of that with the way that we're building parks these days. You know, we want to make certain that there are parks all throughout town. I know that there was some discussion back in maybe September, October about a park on the north end of Highway Two, or set a Highway Two, there was no park up there. And so that would be an example of us wanting to make certain that there are parks for everybody to enjoy that they could walk to. We talk about historic downtown and business districts, and you can see in there that we really want to include locally owned businesses and locally sourced products. One of the frustrations I have is when I go visit my son and his partner out in North Seattle and Capitol Hill, I see lots of farmers that come from the Snoqualmie Valley. Why can't I have them here? I live right next to the Snoqualmie Valley. It's not just the Skycomish, but it's also the Snoqualmie Valleys. And I'd like to see we, our community, because it was reflected in the surveys, we'd like to see more locally owned businesses, not necessarily Walmart, but we want to see more businesses that are owned by, you know, by Janelle or by Jay or Brandy or, you know, Jake, you know, and anybody. Not just the larger chains. And we want to see those local products, you know, that like you get at Milkwood these days, like the Monroe Coffee Company and so on. We we want to be able to find everything that we need here. We acknowledge that our regional connections help facilitate that. I know that while I've lived here over 23 years, that I've had the ability to work in Redmond. I've had the ability to work in North Everett and downtown, Linwood, North Everett. Again, my wife's had the ability to work in Sultan and Duval. And I don't know if you realize it, but we've been able to use all three of those major roadways, Highway Two, 203, and also 522, to get to and from places of work. And so that's one of the things that is unique about our community. So the regional connections are important, but we also want to make certain we have a variety of choices here in town. So we want there to be choices for work, choices for housing, choices for dining and shopping and arts and activities. And what I hope that you're reading there is that when you hear about things like affordable housing and family wage jobs, it's in there. When we talk about choices for work, we're trying to make certain that we're acknowledging that we want to bring businesses here to town that will help support family wage jobs in a variety of choices. So that you don't have to have a master's degree and live here because the only thing you can find here is software engineering or something like that. We want to make certain that we have a diversity of options for people. And the same thing with housing. Affordable housing is a big thing. I'll be meeting with the governor on Friday to talk about affordable housing while I'm down in Olympia. And that is important to us. We want to make certain that you as the planning mission are looking at work and making certain that we're we're helping to provide a diversity of land uses and and development regulations that will bring in not just big box stores, but also medium sized and smaller size commercial. And that we're thinking about that diversity and being able to be flexible as the economy changes, as our residents change, as our needs change. And the same thing with housing. To make certain that it's not just single family detached, we're getting that's a million dollars to purchase. But also that we're looking at duplexes and quadplexes, we're looking at condos, we're looking at apartments, we're looking at ADUs, we're looking at work. Live-work structures, you know, and take a look at things like downtown Woodinville. I hope that you get a chance to go there. My wife and I would like to go down and wine taste there a lot in their new district right next to their city hall. There are some wonderful new developments there that have three stories of residential above a first story that has wine tasting rooms and restaurants and things like that. Having those sorts of options are really important to our community. It builds into these choices here. And I know that everybody supports choice. That's what I've heard all my life, Democrat, Republican, liberal, conservative, you want to promote choice. That's what we're talking about here. And then dining, shopping, arts, activities, it's all self-explanatory. We want to encourage that diversity so that people don't feel like they have to go to Woodinville to do things. They don't have to go to Seattle to do things, but we can do things here. And that we can attract people here too, to do those things. So then as we get down to the bottom parts, friendly and responsive, one of the things that I was talking to one of the committee members, after this got adopted, they said, you know, that's being read a little bit differently than they intended it. They meant that our community is friendly and that we're responsive to one another. And when I read that, I'm always thinking about our city, the the city proper, the institution is friendly and responsive. Well, the meaning behind that was, yeah, the city, but more us. The surveys that we got back talked a lot about how they felt this was a night, a tight knit community, and what that meant was people help one another. And so a lot of these things, like one of the pet peeves that I have is people use words these days, a lot of similes and analogies and things like that. And I don't think that all of us have the shared understanding about what some of these words and phrases mean. And I found in the work that I do, a lot of times you have to ask, well, what do you mean by that? Because your idea of somebody being out in left field might be different than somebody else's idea of being out in left field or holding the bag or, you know, any number of these things. And it's, you know, it's important for us to get to that common understanding. And so what she was explaining to me is that friendly and responsive got to the point of just acknowledging that we are a community that cares for one another. And and that's one of the reasons why I stay here, why I enjoy living in Monroe, is that we are at its heart, we strive to be today, a community that cares for one another. Now, some people who who would look at the Bible, that's about loving your neighbor, right? It's about caring for one another. And then strengthening connections through gathering spaces, events, services, you know, we we feel that when we bring people together in these spaces that you as planning commissioners would encourage, again, like those parks we were talking about, like those like providing for commercial spaces and mixed residential use and so on, when you, when you are doing that physical planning, those those silly documents that you have that are all paper and all esoteric and everything, and then, you know, some developer then comes in to try to build what you've done. Those policy statements and those vision statements that that you put in these documents are really important for us, developing regulations that then lead to the actual physical construction done. And at the end of the day, what you're trying to do is you're trying to build a place. Trying to build place for humans, for people, for families, for kids, for older people to get together to do things. And so adjusting classes, as you're looking at things like that, just take those sorts of things in mind. Events, services, community centered infrastructure, I had a hard time with that. We tried really hard to come up with something not technical, but this is the best we could do. We want to make certain that when we put out streetlights, put out sidewalks, we put out curbs and gutter and we put out sewer and water, and more importantly, like stormwater, the things that have that physical presence in the environment that we're not looking at something ugly. So one of my pet peeves is residential development with really tall walls. You'll see those, for example, in Main View and over on Roosevelt where I live. Those things are just not friendly to human beings, you know, walking along a sidewalk and you're looking at a 15, 20 foot tall wall. You go out into your backyard in your million dollar house and you've got a 10 foot backyard that goes right up to a 20 foot wall. That's not community centered infrastructure. That's not pedestrian scale. And so I challenge you as planning commissioners and in the work that you're doing, that you look at those sorts of things and and say, what does this mean to be community centered infrastructure, you know? The house that I live in, I don't have a driveway. I have an alleyway down the back. I have a detached garage. For me, it's important to to be able to sit in my front room. I actually sit in my front room at night. And I watch TV. I have a, you know, a glass of wine or something like that and hang out with my wife. And I do that because I like to go to look out my window and see people. I don't want to be in the back of my house. And you know what? I really don't want to be in my back, in the back of my house, looking at a 20 foot high wall, 10 feet off of off of where I'm sitting. And so I ask you to think about things like that. I ask you that that you 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 have room in your hearts and your minds to think about what makes community. And what helps us to not just imagine Monroe, but realize or manifest what is in Imagine Monroe. Creating a safe place for all is important. The work that we do, we need to make certain that in the policies that you're developing and the infrastructure we're doing and the budgeting that we do, that we're doing things that are good for everybody. Now, we don't want to just presuppose that this one policy is good for everybody because some policies that we implement are not good for some people. And sometimes we need to take a look at the intent of a policy. I had a code enforcement issue about a year and a half ago. There was a a family and a structure and and there were some issues with the structure. Somebody, somebody had inherited this house and somebody who is family moved into the house. And they could not afford to fix the structure. You know? I'm sorry, you've got a structure that needs to be fixed and all this other stuff, but in our code requires you fix it. I gave direction to staff to try to find a way to help them resolve the issue. While at the same time acknowledging that they didn't have a whole lot of money on hand to be able to, you know, to demo and rebuild. Is it better for us to have that that person now homeless because we have to, to, you know, to require they abandon the whole structure? Or is it better for us to work with them in this particular situation because they could continue living in the structure, but this other part of the structure had to be improved? And then who in the community could we contact to help out in this situation with somebody who is living there because they can't afford to live anywhere else? It's not right for us to put them out on the street. So as we're looking at things like this, creating a safe place for all, this is not just law enforcement, it's not just people who are living on house, but it's in everything that we do. Making certain that the policies we have don't have an adverse impact on others, making certain that the service delivery that we have here at the city doesn't have an adverse impact on on people. So I ask you to look at those things, listen to one another, be objective in it. And just listen and try to make certain that the policies you're developing as planning commissioners realize that with Imagine Monroe. The last statement, in Monroe, everyone feels at home and everyone feels they belong. Again, I've already said it in the upper parts of this. The comments we received from lots and lots of people were that they felt at home here. That's why they stay here. You know, it's that idea of small town, but it's taking it a step farther and defining what we mean by small town. What do we mean by small town? It means you feel at home. And then that sense of belonging, I don't know how many people always think about it, but, you know, for me, I went to three high schools. I went to two intermediate schools. I went to two elementary schools. The military kid. I didn't always felt like I belonged. I was always a new kid in school, my birthday, September 5th, first day of school, usually I got a stack of books and I didn't know anybody. There was no birthday party at home and I knew I was leaving at the end of the year. I really didn't feel a sense of belonging. And that's just me. With my lived experience, there are lots of people who want to feel a sense of belonging. What does belonging mean? You know, you hear about diversity, equity, and inclusion. Belonging is that sense that I can walk into a room and feel at home in my skin and in the presence of other people. That you care for me because of who I am, not who you want me to be, but because of who I am. And in the survey responses that we got from other people, that's what everybody wants. It's that common denominator of humanity. Again, be just, be kind, be humble. And love and care for your neighbors. The work that you do as planning commissioners, that's what's reflected in Imagine Monroe. The work that you do as planning commissioners, you may get stuck in periods, commas, semicolons, bullets, and ones and twos and square footages and FARs and XYZs and CIPAs and GMAs. I used to do it. At its heart, planning is about building space, building place, building community. It's about humanity. It's about people. If you ever have a question about any of this, please ask the staff. Please feel free to ask me. And and I ask that again, out of humility, that you listen to one another. And 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 you really just listen to one another. Don't presuppose that people have certain positions, but listen and try to find what's best for the community. Because at the end of the day, I'm a denominator. Everybody wants the same thing. Get off the social media, get off those algorithms that are driving us into different locations. At the end of the day, each one of us is a human being. Find that spark. All right. Any questions about that? And then I'll talk briefly about branding. Okay, I've spent more time with this than I have with other folks because you're going to work on the planning document. The next thing I usually tell people is now we're going to work on the planning document. You already know that. You have to roll your sleeves up and work on the planning document. And this is your starting point and it's your ending point.
Chair. Thanks, Mayor Thomas. I'm going to ask, first of all, if Commissioners on Zoom have any questions, if you wouldn't mind raising your hand. So we could call on you. No? No? I think you gave us a comprehensive explanation of.
It's more than I have anybody else, but you're doing the planning document. You need to know.
Well, I think a few meetings ago, that's, this is exactly what we needed was a explanation of the three small paragraphs that you guys distilled this down into. And so very grateful for that comprehensive explanation.
Thank you.
Be very helpful for us, especially the part where we all need to listen to each other and work toward Monroe, right?
Yeah. I just want to say thank you, Mayor Thomas, for giving us that thorough explanation. And the beauty of it happening to us is that it is now officially recorded. And so if we need to, and it's at the beginning of our meeting, so if we need to, we can share the recording with people in the future, saying if you'd like a more comprehensive explanation of Imagine Monroe, here is a good place to hear all about it. So thank you very much for the presentation.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to talk briefly about branding then. I think that's what I've been asked to. Yes, okay. They're in charge. I just. So the branding, so part of what we're doing then is we're working on a new brand. The current brand is reflected in the flag that is by behind Commissioner Lewis and Commissioner Dawkins there. It's that logo that that for me looks like something from that I'd find in Las Vegas and neon. I heard a reference as to what that looks like to somebody earlier today and I'll reserve those remarks, but it it made me chuckle. So the the thing is, is that what we want to do is we want to come up with a new brand. So a new brand means the adventure starts here, reevaluating and seeing if that's something that is still consistent with Imagine Monroe. The one of the concerns that I had from people when I was doorbelling nine years ago was the idea of imagine of the adventure starts here. I had residents saying, what do you mean the adventure starts here? I live here. You're telling me that my daily adventure starts here? And there was just like that feeling of it. I just don't feel a connection to this. And so the branding process will allow us to reevaluate the difference between branding and then what the like, the Chamber of Commerce might have, you know, the Chamber of Commerce, maybe the adventure starts here is good for them if they want to focus on bringing people here for tourism reasons. But we talk about residence and 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 growth and who we are, maybe a different brand is is what we're looking for. And then off of that word or those couple of words that might be the brand, then coming up with a new flag, you know, new logos and things like that. So you know, I encourage, we will be, if I recall correctly, and hope I'm not creating scope creep, and if I am, then ignore what I'm saying. I I understand that we will be bringing forward draft ideas to the planning commission, the to Sab, the Parks Board, Planning Commission, their planning commission.
If I may, yes, so as the mayor is saying, you know, now that we have Imagine Monroe adopted by council and that is becoming our creed, so to speak, the next evolution of that is to create a brand that supports that and that we can use to mark the city in a sense. So we've actually begun that process. You will have found, you know, at your your positions, the card, we have a couple of posters, we have these cards, we've been sending out Facebook posts asking people to respond to approximately a ten minute survey. Brand is about what you feel, as the mayor was talking about. It's the heart of who we are. You know, it's nice to have words, but now we want to get to the heart of it. We've started that process with the survey. We deliberately left a closed date off the card. Good eye. Because we did, we want to get as much input on this as possible. So when the survey went out, we recognized that there was challenges with this going out over the holidays. We didn't get a lot of response right away, but last time we checked on Thursday, we are now up to almost 700 responses. So we decided, originally it was supposed to close last Friday. We went ahead and kept it open an additional week. We will be closing this this coming Friday. If you have not yet taken the survey, it's as simple as doing the QR code or the link. And from what I understand, that they're interesting questions, takes about 10 minutes to go through. The the consultant we are working with then will gather all of that. And I guess there's a lot of science behind how those questions are answered that can then lead to, as the mayor was talking about, our brand, our tagline that goes with it, that is going to, and very importantly, will support Imagine Monroe. So this all ties back to Imagine Monroe. When they do that, we are then going to have a focus group, both with our Hispanic speaker, our Spanish speaking community in town, and we have 12. in town, and we have 12 ambassadors that we've been reaching out to, that we want to set up that meeting. We'll have a second focus group with Ted, or we'll have individual interviews with 10 business members in our community as well. We'll have a third focus group with that will be virtual. Again, no more than 12, so that we can really get that synergy going. As ideas start circulating through that, then we're going to have brand ambassadors working with us to again, start just kind of shopping the ideas with their influencer groups. As well as, as the mayor indicated, coming to all of our advisory councils. To get your input on it as well, so that when we take the product then to the council for consideration, we will feel like we have had as much input as possible to really get to what it is that it means to Imagine Monroe. So. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me.
Yeah, it's pleasure. And and I will admit, when I filled out the the survey, I felt like I was redoing my SATs all over again. Especially there was a section where I felt like I was doing beef jerky is to lemon as I, it was just like, oh, my goodness, what am I doing here? But you know, I just encourage folks to to take the survey and as you can see, we're going to receive input, just like we did before. We did a lot of this very similar to Imagine Monroe and there will still be that human element of people looking things over and understanding the nuances of everything. So it's a really exciting time. And it's a really exciting time for you to be planning commissioners with the comp plan update with Imagine Monroe, with the branding. And you should be excited. Each of you should be excited to be working on this at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have one question for you, as long as we have you here, Mayor Thomas.
Okay.
So I've been a resident over half my life. And ever since I've, you know, been here. Kate has told us, you know, the city is going to grow at one to two percent a year. But there's certain portion of residents that don't appreciate growth, even at that level, which is not very rapid growth, right? So as planners, I know you're a planner deep down. Right? So can you have any words for the commission on? You know, how we go about going through the comp plan? You know, we talk about affordability all the time, density increases affordability. And there's always a degree of pushback. When you talk a little bit about density. And we're not talking about a huge amount of growth. We're talking about a little, but there's always a portion of the community that says oh, that's going to kill my commute. No. You know, how do, how do we push past that and do what's right for the community?
My, my advice would be to listen. And to try to find the common denominators and try to find the root causes, what their concerns are. If people are concerned, so if people are concerned that they don't want to have multifamily because they're concerned about about, you know, four story structure next to their single family detached home and shadows and things like that. Consider what that means. I mean, what can we do in development regulations that that help to make certain that they don't have ugly boxes that are, you know, right on their property line if it's you know, what, what, what can we do to make certain that architecturally these buildings look interesting? That there are landscape buffers in between the buildings that you don't put the parking for a multi-use right on the property line without any sort of landscaping. Where, you know, somebody's living in a single family detached home, you know? When you talk about traffic, I mean, one of the things that's going to be interesting is that the world has changed because of the pandemic. You have people working from home now. So some of those ideas of traffic and transportation, they're going to be different. You know, also we have, you know, you talk about traffic and transportation, what can we do? Lobbying down in Olympia that, hey, this is an urban area, you know, we have better services, we have better parks, police, finance and everything. And we are more accessible than than like if you were to go to Snohomish County and you lived outside of city limits. So you know, where I'm going with this is that growth should happen where those services exist. And growth is going to happen whether you want to or not. I mean, people have kids, right? And so growth is going to happen. Listen to what their concerns are and listen past their concerns. They may just say, I don't want growth. Well, why don't you want growth? Well, I don't want, I don't want these big tall structures. Well, why don't you want the big tall structures? Cause there are places that want them and they look really good. Go to Woodenville, go to downtown Redmond. You've got structures that look really nice. Try to get at why they don't want that. And then ask yourself, once you get there, if you know, what you can do to mitigate for it. Or if it's even right to mitigate it for it. There are some people that their reasons, once you get down to the heart. Maybe, maybe reasons that as as planners, you that that that's not exactly consistent with what you're supposed to be doing as planner. You know, planners, which is building an inclusive. Building an inclusive landscape where where people can live. You know, things that are not consistent with the constitution. You just want to close the gates and not let anybody else in that. That's contrary to the US Constitution. You know, you can't do that. And you have the ability to move and everything. You have the ability to live where you want to live and everything. So that would be my advice. Ask why. And then ask the staff what your role is to satisfy the why. And we do need to accommodate that growth required to by the state. If all else fails, you can, you can go back to that, but I, I, I feel that you should listen to what their concerns are and and try to address them through the landscaping and buffers and you're right, maybe we shouldn't put multifamily in that particular situation and there's a reason for it. And when I'm talking multifamily, I'm talking huge structures. I'm not talking quadruplexes and duplexes that can integrate into a single family detached neighborhood. Does that help?
Okay, thank you. Yes.
You're welcome. All right. Anything else for me? Sure.
I think we're good. Appreciate your time, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item, we have a presentation, Open Public Meetings Act. Jody, City Clerk.
Notice they're skedaddling as soon as they can, so they don't have to be now have to go through this again. Good evening, everyone. I am Jody Wykoff, City Clerk. I think I have met all of you, I think. I think we've emailed, but I, yeah. Uh, let me see here. Let me go. Oh, that's the one I want. Hannah has graciously allowed me just to share my screen directly so that she doesn't have to forward all my slides. Is that going to work? That is, and last year I used that slide for the mayor, so. Alrighty, well, most of you have been through this training before. Some of you through me and hopefully all of you through AWC. I did some searching in my files and I will admit that the E files are a little bit scattered. So it is possible that I have your certificate and was not able to locate it. So if you have taken the training since the beginning of 2022 last year, please send that to Hannah or me so that I can make sure that I log it. I do have most of your, I, I I have some of your certificates, but not all. So and if you have not taken the training, this is me reminding you that you are required by law to take the training. So my, my little spiel here doesn't count. I, I, I try to hit the high notes, but the AWC trainings are actually really, really good. I, I just recently took mine because I have to refresh mine as well every four years. And they do, they're, they're new to me, so I don't know when they updated them, but they're really, I of course, I'm a clerk, so OPMA, PRA is kind of interesting to me, so. All right, so let's get right to it and I'll try and make this as painless as possible. So as mentioned, there is the Open Government Trainings Act. This is your requirement to take training within 90 days of taking your seat on an advisory board and every four years thereafter. It is something that went into effect, I believe in 2017, I want to say. So getting right into the Public Records Act, the purpose of the act, I'm not going to read this whole thing to you, but basically the public requires full access of information. Excuse me, full access to information concerning the conduct of government on every level. So records in the Public Records Act is liberally construed. It's everything from the recording of this meeting to the notes you're taking about this meeting, to the notes she's taken about this meeting, to the minutes. Post-it notes on your desk, as long as it's related to the, to government, all those little things are public record. But we don't have to keep it all. Thank goodness. There's these wonderful things called retention schedules that the state updates on a regular basis and you may or may not care, but the state recently revised the land use retention schedule. So I know that community development and the planning department in particular are extremely excited that that's been revised. Cause now it means we don't have to keep it quite as much for quite as long. So there are many records that we actually do not have to hold on to. The meeting invites that you guys get for these meetings, the preliminary drafts that go back and forth. So all those comp plan drafts are most likely something that we're going to be able to get rid of once we have a final version in hand. The notes that Hannah takes before she writes for minutes, those don't have to be kept. And then some more transitory versus non-transitory. So you don't have to retain something that says, I'm going to be late to the meeting. But you would have to keep it if you said, I'm going to be late, but I think we should appoint Tom to the planning commission. So if you're talking about business specific to your job as a planning commissioner, that is where the line is drawn between a transitory record and a non-transitory record. Another, some more examples of things that you don't necessarily have to keep for a long period of time, any electronic records that are that are used to create a signed document. That signed document becomes the original that has to be retained. To-do lists. Drafting and editing of correspondence, documents and publications, all those things are stuff that we can get rid of. Handwritten notes for yourself. So if you're writing notes today at the meeting, but you're not planning to ever use them again, you can put them in the recycle bin as soon as you leave here. So if you're ever in doubt, don't throw it, throw it out, contact myself or Sherry Simonson. She's our city public records officer and the, between the two of us, we can help you figure out if you have to keep something or not. And also, even if it is transitory, if we receive a public records request and you have a record that is related to that topic that's going to need to be disclosed or reviewed for disclosure, you're not allowed to get rid of that until after that records request is closed or Sherry or I tell you otherwise. So sometimes you'll see emails from Sherry that say, hey, we got this request. It includes, you know, topics X, Y and Z. Please don't destroy any records if you have them and notify, you know, me if you, if you do. So even if it's a handwritten note that you know, you can, you should have been able to get rid of now that the records request is open, you no longer can get rid of it until we tell you otherwise. So for text messages, emails on your personal device, anything like that, social media. A record that an employee, which as a commissioner, you guys are considered an employee, prepares, owns, uses or retains within the scope of your employment. So within the scope of your employment means that your job requires it. Your employer or the city directs it or furthers the city's interest. This includes social media. Even an agency-related Facebook post on a personal Facebook account can be a public record. If the post was made within the employee's official scope of employment. So if you're responding as a planning commissioner, using your personal Facebook account to another post, that exchange could be a, a public record. So we always recommend that A, you just don't. Or B, if you're going to make sure that you make a caveat at the beginning of that post that says, this is my personal opinion, not my opinion as a commissioner of the planning commission or as a member of an advisory board or something along those lines, just kind of to save yourself that angst if we ever have to ask you to give us your Facebook account information. Let's see, and the reason why all these things are coming up is because there's been plenty of lawsuits related to Public Records Act. If you took this training from me in the past, not much has changed, except the number of lawsuits. So, and the amount of money that cities have had to pay out for said lawsuits. So some tips about the Public Records Act, contact myself or Sherry Simonson to make transfer arrangements for records that need to be retained. So if you feel like you have something that the city should be holding on to, give us a call and we'll evaluate that with you and make arrangements for us to retain it on your behalf. And as I mentioned before, any record existing at the time of a records request must be disclosed regardless of the retention value. And if you request, if you receive a request for records, please immediately forward that request to Sherry or myself. There is also case law right now about what constitutes a public records request and it's still a gray area in the court of law. So we are conservatively basically saying that anybody can ask anyone who works with the city, including yourselves for a record and we, we should probably treat that like a records request, a valid request. We do have a portal that people can request records. The link is directly on our front page. So if you can get them to go to there instead of asking you, that would be the safest way to make sure that they get what they're looking for. So I mentioned violations and penalties and lawsuits and all the good things. City of Monroe did have to pay out on a public records violation at one point in time. I believe it was 2000. Somebody told me 2019, but I'm not a hundred percent sure that's accurate. But the recent one, this, this is the only slide that has changed in my presentation. You'll notice the big Seattle to make 1.5 million dollar payment over a lawsuit related to delete, deleted text messages. So I don't know if you remember on the news, there was text messages between, I think, the mayor and the chief of police or something along those lines. And the city ended up getting sued and has to pay over 1.5 million dollars for that. So people are becoming more savvy and trying to get cities in trouble with their records requests. They'll like hide a records request within something. And so we have to be really diligent and I am so grateful that I have Sherry Simonson on my, on my side. I'll tell you what, she's amazing. So before I move away from the Public Records Act, I wanted to pause and offer to answer any questions if there are any. So riveting, right? Just, yes.
No questions yet.
Okay. All right. So we're going to move on to the OPMA, the Open Public Meetings Act. This is obviously related to meetings of governing and advisory boards. The purpose is that people of Washington do not yield sovereignty to local government and agencies. They remain, insist on remaining informed. And public servants in the state exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. It's the intent of the OPMA, the actions of public servants be taken openly and that their deliberations be conducted openly. So a meeting under the OPMA is when a majority of the governing body is present and where action is taken. As you know, a majority is also called a quorum. And for planning commission purposes, you guys are a board of seven, so four of you constitute a quorum. There can be situations in which a gathering of less than a quorum can constitute a meeting under OPMA sent such as certain meetings of council committees or subcommittees. So three important things about OPMA, all meetings of the governing body must be open and all persons permitted to attend, except certain exemptions. No secret ballots and any decisions for council ordinances, resolutions. Uh, for planning commission, any action that you take is considered null and void if it's uh, not a open, if it's not a um, valid meeting under OPMA. Action includes discussion, deliberations, public testimony, review and evaluations. Uh, it's not just final action. So if, so if you did not have a quorum tonight, you would not have been able to ask for public testimony because that is considered an action under OPMA. So um, the committee meetings, if, if I'm, it's all listed as counsel, but I will say that I've seen uh, planning commissions with subcommittees as well. So this would pertain to a subcommittee of the planning commission. And that is if the committee was created by the planning commission and the subcommittee conducts a hearing, takes public testimony or comment or acts on behalf of the full planning commission. So if you guys decide to have, um, I don't know, uh, I'm trying to think of, of something, a, a comp plan, a co- yeah, a complant subcommittee that you guys dig into the weeds on certain things and you're going to be making decisions on behalf of that, of the full planning commission, then that subcommittee would be subject to OPMA and your meetings would have to be noticed and open to the public. So when you are communicating with other members of the planning commission by email, social media, text messaging, phones, phone calls, et cetera, including the chat feature on Teams or any other uh, such device, those depending, uh, how do I want to say this, um, you can violate OPMA accidentally by having a serial meeting. As I mentioned before, you really shouldn't comment or otherwise communicate on the city's social media sites. And participating in online discussions may constitute a meeting under OPMA. Uh, similar to what I was saying, like the, the best way is just to not. And if you do, make sure and put that caveat in there. And unless for informational purposes only, we recommend that you do not send an email to all or a majority of the planning commission or any other governing body for that matter. And don't use the reply all. If you get an email from somebody and it does go out and says, hey, I found this great article. I think you guys should read it. Great. Send reply only to say thank you or just don't reply. That's my preference, honestly. I mean, I know, I know you appreciate me, so you don't need to tell me. Thank you. But uh, I as a, when I'm sending an email out to all of the council members, I will actually put them in my blind carbon copy. So that even if they do reply all, it doesn't accidentally go to everybody. So um, that's just kind of my little, my little tip there. So the serial meeting that I was talking about, that would be um, similar to if Commissioner Blair called Commissioner Bull, they talked about something. And then Commissioner Blair called Commissioner Dawkins and said, hey, we talked, this is what we think. And then Dawkins contacts Lewis and says, hey, the three of us have talked. And we've decided that at the next meeting, we're going to vote yes on this item. You just violated OPMA by having a serial conversation, even though the four of you were never on the phone at the same time. It would also be a, a combination of text messages, emails, phone calls. So if there's a text between two of you and then one of you calls the third person and the third person emails the fourth person, that communication put all together just violated OPMA. So it's just easiest if you, if you're going to communicate and you want to get a message out to all of them, do it through staff. That's what we're here for. So executive sessions, um, there are rare, rare situations where you would have the ability to have an executive session, but it's not completely out of the realm of possibility. So I'll review that slightly. It's mostly counsel that has exec sessions. There's very few things that are uh, that can be talked about during an exec session. Um, they include things like um, pending or potential litigation, uh, evaluating candidates seeking to fill a vacancy, uh, purchase of property, qualifications of a public employee, all those kinds of things fall under exec session. Um, but even when you're talking about certain things, you're in exec session, there's still that fine line of some of the stuff can be talked about in exec session and all the other part of the conversation that is related to that topic has to be an open session. And what happens in exec session stays in exec session. The public servants are not allowed to discuss anything related to what was just talked about in exec session. Without the prior approval of counsel and in most cases, they wouldn't get that approval anyway. Um, violators are subject to financial penalties and possible forfeiture of office. And even with virtual meetings, say you guys were in an exec session right now, Commissioners Walker and Nugent would need to make sure that they are in a closed room. Nobody else in the household can hear them. You know, that kind of thing. You don't want somebody walking through the room while you're in e-session and, and accidentally violate that OPMA. The personal fines can be five hundred dollars for the first fine and up to a thousand for any subsequent violation. Uh, that's for OPMA in general, not just the executive session stuff that I was talking about. The attorney's fees and court costs could also be yours to pay. And again, any by, any meeting that violates OPMA, any actions taken during that meeting are null and void. So I mentioned your required training, I'll tout it again. Um, this is every, within ninety days of taking office and every four years thereafter. So again, if you have taken your training since this time last year, please make sure that um, your certificate gets to me um, either through Hannah or just directly to me, JY Coff at MonroeLaw.gov. Um, and I, again, I do have some of them. I just, I forgot to look up my list uh, before I started, so. I can let Hannah know who I do or don't have, whichever is the lesser. So let's see. This just tells us who has to attend the training. So it's basically you. You have to attend it. I have to attend it. Hannah has to attend it. If Kate was ever going to be chairing or not chairing, but uh, the secretary for these meetings, she would have to take it. So it's, it's uh, public officials and staff that um, are involved in the meetings that have to take the training. There is uh, links to this training directly on the board and commission website uh, on our webpage on our website. Or if you go to awcnet dot hmm, org, I want to say. Or WaCities.org, actually, it's actually on my screen. Um, then search for uh, Open Government Trainings Act and it should bring you to the links to take the trainings. There's two separate trainings, one for OPMA, one for PRA. They're each about forty to forty-five minutes. So it's riveting, riveting stuff. So a quick note about municipal ethics, um, there are municipal ethics related to uh, what we call double dealing. It's voting to approve city contracts where you would be personally benefiting from those contracts. And then there's the appearance of fairness doctrine, which you have probably heard of. It applies whenever the city is acting in a quasi judicial capacity, like an appeal or other contested hearing in which the rights of a specific party are being determined. And if you think that there's a potential conflict of interest on a particular agenda item, let staff know well in advance of the meeting and we can work with you and our city attorney to find out if you need to recuse yourself from the discussion and or vote. And that is that. Any questions?
Questions? We'll just look forward to an email of those certificates that are not present.
Yes, I will look them up right now after I get out of the, um, after I stop showing my screen. Okay. Yes.
Um, that last side that you had with like the municipal ethics and stuff, is that part of state law or is that specific to the city of Monroe that is state law?
Yes, yes, that is. Um, I can, I wouldn't be able to cite the RCW for you, but yes. Um, and we do have uh, an ethics code as well, um, but it basically mimics the RCW. Um, and it's, it is related to the um, direct benefit of a contract and voting on set contract. So yeah, that is, that is state law. Let's see. Oh, my screen is too big. So I have Jacob Walkers. I have Jay Bulls. Ooh, you guys are good. You guys, almost all of you have yours. I have Randy Blair, Liz Nugent, Melanie, Chanel. I think Kelsey. Okay. Oh, perfect. So if, once I get, once I get yours, you guys are like solid, you got it. You don't have to do your training. So, so uh, you are not required to take this training again until twenty twenty-six. So you guys are, you guys are good to go, although I think I will be asked to attend every year at the beginning of the year, just to give you a reminder, tell you if there's any updates on either of the laws that affect you, that kind of thing. So, so yay, you get to see this again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Right. We have one more. That was item seven point two under new business. We have one additional item under new business. Is that right, Kate?
Election of Chair and Vice Chair.
Okay.
And Hannah, we have a cheat sheet for them to follow.
Agenda bill, as the, the agenda bill has the motions for.
Put that in the packet. So. And Hannah, if anyone doesn't get nominated, they can nominate themselves, correct? If they so desire.
Yes.
Randy?
I would like to move to make Jay Bull president, um, again, the election of the chair, the main chair.
Second.
And we do need a vote.
Okay.
So.
Should we take other chair nominations?
Oh no, I was just, I was clicking my button, but Commissioner Walker beat me to the second. So you have to take a vote officially now, because it's been moved and seconded.
Um, all in favor, please say aye. Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Hannah. Appreciate it. We, we were without a vice chair for uh, too long, so we need another, uh, we need a vice chair nominated, please.
I, I would like to move to nominate Melanie Lockhart for vice chair.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have a vice chair. Congratulations, Melanie.
Congratulations.
Excellent. Thank you all.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. So. Shall we?
Just on to discussion.
Discussion, yeah. I'll start with the new vice chair, please.
All right. I don't have a lot to say, um, except for that Commissioner Walker. I don't know if you've noticed from your view of your house, but the city has added orange flags at the little crossing. There's no crosswalk there.
Oh, yeah.
Um, um, along Fryland's Boulevard where um, you enter to go to the new fields and also it's, it connects to the drop off pickup area for Fryland's Elementary School. So there's the crossing flags there now, and I think that's awesome that the city added it there. It gives just a little more visibility to people walking at all hours. Um, and other than that, happy new year and I hope everybody had a wonderful holiday season and that's all for me. And thank you for electing me as vice chair. That seems a surprise, so. Um, I don't have anything tonight. Uh, happy new year and um, well, the mayor's gone, but I'm really enjoyed his Imagine Monroe tonight. So that's it.
Great, thank you. Kelsey?
Um, I do have a couple of things. Uh, I don't know if it's a, if this is where to bring it up, but I was wondering about the, there's like quite a bit of logs being built up at Alborlin Park. Um, like becoming to be where like the beach is almost not usable or you can't get to it. And I don't know, could I bring that up too? If this is where I would, or if the city, I don't know, takes care of things like that.
Can I ask for a clarification? Are you, are you saying the logs have built up naturally?
Yeah.
From the river?
Yeah.
There's not anything we can do about that.
Okay, because I think that that's going to change the, like, access to that beach completely.
We will monitor it. I can tell you when I worked here back in the early two thousands, I think we lost over ten feet of a portion of Alborlin Park. So um, that is the channel migration zone where the weaves back and forth is usually a hundred feet wide.
Okay.
And um, it's protected. You've got salmon in there.
That makes sense.
So.
I just didn't know.
But that's a good point about public access. I'll, I'll reach out to our parks department and see what can be done.
And then also, um, I don't know if there's anything being done about the um, the light on Main Street in Kelsey. It doesn't change. Um, it just is red and I've had to run it to get across that. It just will stay red forever. So.
So the timing?
Yeah, it just, especially, yeah, it just won't change.
Okay.
So it's an optical sensor, not a, not a ground sensor, you think?
Oh, maybe, because it's when you're coming on Kelsey, not on Main, the main just gets green and then the Kelsey ones don't turn, uh, doesn't notice that you're there.
I will reach out to Public Works, but for both of those, um, if you go to our website, there's um,
Monroe Listens.
Monroe Listens. You can always put comments in there about sidewalks, lights.
I didn't know that.
Zoning, uh, complaints, neighborhood issues.
Cool.
It gets sent to the appropriate department.
Okay, great. Um, and just congratulations and happy new years. That's it.
Randy?
Yeah, not a lot either. Just getting used to this being a new year and be done with the holidays. And um, I am definitely inspired for this year of planning. The mayor is very inspirational with his speech. And I was on the Imagine Monroe Committee. I was one of those twenty people. Um, and he did summarize um, authentically what the feedback was and the reason of why the vision statement came out the way that it was. Um, yeah, I'm looking forward to working with everybody this year. This should be fun.
Thanks, Brandy. We'll go to our commissioners on Zoom. Jacob, we'd like to offer our congratulations before you tell us what, what else is new in your life.
You took my uh, my story, Jay. No, I uh, I appreciate that. My uh, boy was born on uh, December sixteenth. So uh, just been taking it easy at home, working in shifts with uh, Ally and uh, my wife. And yeah, I wanted to apologize for looking distracted and having to adjust my screen a few times because he was in my lap for the first half of the meeting. Um, but uh, yeah, things are good. I wanted to wish all you guys a happy new year as well. Congrats to uh, Jay and Melanie on their positions and that is all I got. Melanie, I did see the flags and they are awesome. So kudos to the city for making that happen. It's very much appreciated.
Thanks, Jake. Liz?
Um, I don't have too much. Congratulations, Commissioner Walker and imagine, congratulations, Commissioner Bull or Chair Bull and Vice Chair. Bull or Chair Bull and Vice Chair Melanie. So I'm excited for the upcoming year and yeah, Monroe listens is awesome because the city will get back to you. I've had calls from police officers responding to my comments or what I've posted. So they do respond. So it's great. So I highly encourage pushing it out to people and if they have complaints on things to use that button because the city does listen. So, thanks.
Thanks, Liz. I just wanted to say thanks to staff that, you know, came tonight and helped, you know, explain you know, what our role is, you know, what we're supposed to be looking at as we proceed through the year. So appreciate them being here. Do you have anything for us, Kate?
I have a couple of things and just to let you know, the number two department for public records request, planning. It's, it's important. We are going to send you a couple of email reminders, but very importantly, February seventh, there will be a joint meeting between the Planning Commission and City Council. It's the first meeting with our consultant team for the comp plan update. Very important. And on January thirty-first, I will be at City Council, just giving them an overview, which you've already had last year of what the comp plan is and we'll be including some information about the work that's been happening behind the scenes this last year. And then finally, we'll be following up with a citywide kickoff in the middle of March. And so we'll have information on that. That event will most likely take part. I'm hoping at the high school commons, it's a nice big room for everyone to participate. So lots of excitement going on. It's going to be a busy year. And I'm really excited to be working with you again. Happy New Year.
Thanks, Kate. So for the commissioners, we meet the second and fourth Monday of every month. The seventh is the first Tuesday of the month, which is a city council.
Workshop.
So.
It's seven to, it's the, it starts at seven. We're trying to keep it at normal times. Yeah. Yeah, you'll get a meeting invitation, but I just wanted to give you a heads up now. Put it on your calendar.
Just wanted to make sure that everybody kind of
Yes.
Okay. And that's.
That's all I have for you unless you have questions for me this evening.
Any questions for Kate? Happy New Year, Kate.
Thank you.
Hannah, what do you have for us?
Just congratulations to Commissioner Walker and to Vice Chair Lockhart and to Chair Bull. And happy late holidays. Lunar New Year is coming up. It's going to be the year of the rabbit. So hopefully we'll all stay on our toes and learn a lot.
And Lance is on, online tonight.
Oh, great. I didn't see him. Lance, do you have anything for us this evening?
I do. For some reason, I can't get my video to work. I just wanted to, I just wanted to, to say happy new year to everybody and, and I want to thank all of the planning commissioners for, for the service that you, that you provide. And really look forward to, to getting deep into the comp plan process this year. I, I've been enthused by many of the comments that the planning commissioners have made. And I think that I have a lot of strong optimism for some good things that, that are going to come out of this process. So really looking forward to to that meeting on the seventh. I think that, that you'll get a good look at some of the really some of the unique work that the consultants have been working on that we're going to incorporate into the, into the comp plan. So, and, and for anyone who's interested in listening in on the the, the city council meeting or attending in person, there, there may be some, some new nuggets of information in there. Some of it will be a, a repeat of what staff has, has already presented, but would encourage you to, to to, to check out that meeting as well. That's all I've got.
Okay. Thanks, Lance. And you're talking about the meeting on the thirty first?
Yeah.
Yeah, the thirty first, yes.
Great. Thanks very much. Okay.
That's it from staff.
That's it. Would anybody like to move for adjournments?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
I second it.
Thank you. See, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks.